Welcome, everyone. Has everybody signed in?
Commissioners, I should go do that.
We're gonna start, we're gonna start our meeting and Matt and Clark will call role, please.
Lisa Denanzi of Layer Clerk. Mr. Little what?
Here.
Bernard?
Here.
So her name is that.
Here. Okay, so Commissioners, I'd like to suspend regular gen items. We have a presentation from NOPEC here, Energy Company. We have Brenda Fargo and Chuck Kuyper with NOPEC. And Chuck, you'd like to start your presentation and-
I would love to. Can I come to that?
Sure, come on over.
For all of you, my backs to be toured, I apologize.
No, Brendan, please sit at the table.
Seen you all before. You know about, I don't know about, not quite here.
They don't know who else needs one of these, but we're putting in the middle.
Thank you for having us and for allowing us. Quite an energy company, right? We're a council of governments that now represents 249 communities around the state of Ohio, predominantly in northeast Ohio. We've been around for 25 years. And we think we have the most definite proposition in this industry. We are operated by our communities for their benefit. Our sole purpose for existence is to serve their needs. And when it proves our way, it's passed on to them. And they govern us. So we are governed by a general assembly where every community has NOPEC representation coming from daily once a year. They decide what rules they'll govern themselves by, so charge bylaws. They decide who among them will sit on our board of directors, who will lead 10 times a year to make sure the business gets connected. And finally, they also vote on our budget. So they're very much hands-on kind of station. Our mission is really very simple. It's to educate, educate, advocate. We do those three things to maximize benefits and investments to forward the priorities of our member. That's it. So, but for you, you don't exist. No, there's no profit motive. Although we're gonna keep doors open like you're in playoffs, but anything that we give proves to her. So before I walk you through the PowerPoint, I'll talk in a second. Let me tell you that currently on our board of directors is Premier Doug. Joe Franklin from City of Lawrence, so I took you guys over. He's the third or fourth, I think, he's the fourth member from the city who's been on that. We've also had a board member from City Falls, touch it. So, been around for a while. Warren was a original member, so they're a founding member that the membership is now 45 years old. Let me tell you about a couple of things that aren't in the PowerPoint that we are able to do because our communities asked us, and Warren is perfect example. The mayor came to me about three years ago. We're really trying to work on a project to bring back a former superfund site. There's some developers I've led to. We are now three years into the discussion, knowing their founding members passed away, so. We're about three quarters of the way through the discussion about a solar field. These folks are going to be adapting and reusing and rebuilding new under the site, which they help to use for industrial purposes. They want the power to come from the sun there. They plan on putting 120 megawatt made place solar farm on the property. NOPEC has committed to buying all of the credit. And while they are ramping up and getting their rental floor, they found that if they buy all of the power, our job really is to enable the dreams communities. That's a classic example. Mayor also came to me. So, we've got a real problem. A couple of different improvements that we have. Wonder if you can use your property assess clean energy pace program. Residential situations. And we said, well, we've never done that. Maybe we can figure it out. So we just rolled out a trial economy, which is an active boost. Very first residential pace program we've done. Property says clean energy programs is a landmine to people. Predominant business typically four to 20 million dollars loans. So that they can do better sustainability things, they can get better energy efficiency and finance that. Instead of paying a monthly payment goes on accident. We've now done probably 15 or 16 million dollars of loans to governments for profit to. And I'm now gonna try for the first time in actual county that's under construction, four units. So it'll be the build and even more and targeted at our second. To put together a program that will allow for initial investment in this community where really investment has. Think initially six units in the first year, second. And as many as a dozen in the third year. So NOPEC will be the lender. We also act as construction lender in those situations. And those are the kinds of investments that you don't see happening with anybody else who does. And we're able to do it because we, our board of directors has set aside now about eight million dollars of their own dollars into this pool. And we've been successfully been able to secure now about 23 million dollars in total from USDA funds to be able to these kinds of projects. So all of your townships would then be able to. And because we're working with land bank, we would really be able to do individual things throughout the whole footprint. Very excited about that. We hope that after these first two projects, we'll homogenize this throughout our footprint. But because of the size and scope of what the mayor, Warren wanted to do is really get it out and started. You'll be reading more about that as that, as that development comes through. I anticipate that by a year from now, we will be in construction. Exciting stuff. All right. Any questions about that? All right. Let me walk you through, I've already told you about the first page of this PowerPoint. Brenda's giving you all her important, that's important information. We do that frequently. And as you look through there, you'll get a better summary of our overall programs and value proposition. You'll get a good idea of our balance sheet. We are probably the most stable governmental aggregation maybe in the nation. Certainly the state of Ohio. We're the largest and oldest government state of Ohio. And yet we're communities across Ohio, watchdogs. We spend an awful lot of time, energy, effort monitoring what happens at the state house. Wasn't you pay attention? That can be a very challenging job. But we also intervene into every electric utility, natural gas utility they face throughout the state of Ohio. And we have been responsible for returning hundreds of millions of dollars back to consumers that were charged fraudulently or in error, we like to say. So, correct. But clearly, we make it our business to be at the table where you cannot, where your residents and small businesses cannot. So we intervene in all those cases, we report all of those discussions. I'll give you another great example with the city of, city of Warren, as you may know, has through council and great house there has initiated the litigation against the electric company to seek ownership of their own light posts, et cetera. We have also intervened in a great case around that and brought that same stuff into the table there, different kind of application. And we have worked with law director there to make sure that they're well positioned to be at that table as well. So for the first time ever, the city of Warren intervened into a state of litigation case. So that they have standing so that we can get that to, to a settlement discussion that will happen outside of the courts. So those are the kind of things also that we do in that space every day. We know everybody else who's out there. Most of those folks are not in that space now, let alone. So we think that's important. And then we do a lot of energy education. We work with the Ohio Energy Project. We now bring Ohio education opportunities to about 15,000 school kids a year throughout our footprint. This year, for the first time, we partnered for many years, we partnered with the Great Lakes Science Center. This year, for the first time, provided dollars for school systems who don't have the money to bus their students there, but they're in a NOPEC umbrella. We pay on a first-hand, first-person basis now for students to be driven from their schools to the Great Lakes Science Center to be at. That was a huge success. We've already signed up next year. So those are the kind of things that we try to look for, opportunities. And there are a great number of school districts in your county that are falling to that list that we. So again, not something that we necessarily talk about and try to nail out that, right? Or if you take a look, but we are constantly looking for opportunities to provide a give back. For you. So, that said, we do give grants. Our grants are a result of negotiation that we have with our companies that we work with. In this case, we're currently working with Xera Energy, which is a floor-based company. Call themselves the nation utility, the predominantly solid financially ranked utility in the country there. The owners of floor top light things. And as a result of our negotiations, we give back to our communities about four and a half, five million dollars a year in energy efficiency grants. We have become the largest energy, public sector energy efficiency grantor, giving back even more to in the state of Ohio. We're now just under 60 million. See that on the slide. We would do the center of the county, so all of the little box on the fourth slide. You'll see there that the township's under us based on the formula that we do, assuming we're asking. It's all based on how many folks get the power from us. But your township between them would get about 190,000 using assuming about two-thirds of people stay with the education, which is about the average. And then the county, we always give counties, a number of counties, a number, Orange is a member, Lake is a member. Actually, there's a member of somebody. And so those counties get a grant as well. I didn't run the math on you guys, but I think it would be some, it would be at least 25, some more probably. Is what the county for. You have to use those grants for energy efficiency purposes, but if you put it into any number of your films, it will pay. It's a one-page application process. Does require legal action from you all on the pass of some legislation. But I was in the grant business most of my life. This is the easiest grant application of the word process you will ever find. It's a big way to do a one-page document. Fill it out, sign your legislation, and it's generally approved as long as it's a stretch. We have done things like water reduction. Efficiency for a community in Ashdabula, Coney Island, once came to us and said, they're planning a big interstate natural gas pipeline. We'd like to have them include running a line to our port in their master plant. So it's planned for, so if we did it, we could very unusual request that we create. So although they haven't built a big international or interstate pipeline that goes through Coney Island, there is a stub that they can tap into if they ever want.
Yeah. When you're talking about grants, so the city of Warren, how many dollars have they received back in grants?
I'd have to check, but I think the city of Warren gets around 90,000 a year for electricity and slightly less than that for gas. So it's probably a little more than 150,000 dollars a year. I'm sure Mayor Doug knows off the top of his head, and I certainly could find out pretty quick.
And they've used that for what? You know?
Well, they've done all of the lighting and all of the HVAC in their city hall. They did lights at several different ballparks. So they can have games at the beginning for soccer, for baseball, softball. But I could find out exactly. I know that they did some IT improvements a number of years ago. They've been getting those grants since we started having grants, so probably now have at least 12 or 13. So Commissioner, I can find out the answer. Did you make the other?
Could we, could we waive the grants? Is that we rolled at the cheaper prices for residents?
No, you can't. See how that works. It doesn't, there's no charge, nobody-
I mean, why should we make a benefit off people paying their electric bill? Why don't you just give them better rates?
Because if I take five and a half million dollars across the almost billion dollars of natural gas. It's not much. And those dollars really aren't tied to the rate in any way. Here's how that negotiation. There are natural averages, a national, a regional average of what a for-profit electric company will pay to identify a customer. They'll pay commissioners to assign that customer. So my negotiation with our company starts as you don't have to do the A, B, or C because I've already done that. But I don't think it's fair that your shareholders get to keep all that money. My shareholders, you like your share. So that's in our contracts and that said a lot more. Not disclosure, that's how it works. So if I were gonna do that, since I didn't give another grant, all five and a half million. It's a tiny, tiny amount. Our normal buy to receive natural gas here for customers then is in the neighborhood of 700 to 800 million. And when prices go up, that number, so, so electricity prices roll up because of capacity charges that pass through is probably a little 50 million, it's maybe nine. So when you take five million out of that cost. And none of it's rate time, so no one's paying. It's coming from the savings that the utility recognizes or the energy company with the cars of because they have to find a customer site. Okay, those are two things for them. That's how that works. So it's a really big question. And we get asked it a great deal.
And we, because we were told by the company we're with that they don't give grants, they roll it back and keep them on rates. And that's how they grow, compete, you guys and the other ones at the last bid with a better rate.
I don't think they gave you a better rate, but we can debate that.
Just, just bringing up apples to apples.
I don't ever talk about my competition, but I will put this value proposition to anybody. It is focused on you. It is driven by you. It is guided by your peers. Every single thought, every single thought. Nobody that you've found does that. And I think everyone is free to create their own value proposition and they can go out and sell it. I wouldn't ever talk about one of them. That's not my business. We do it pretty. We do what we do very well. We do it in your name, in your honor. In your silver, not blood, honor, sir. All of the 28 of us at NOPEC who have any heart, they feel it, wear it, and own. We are very proud to be public organizations serving public best needs and we love finding opportunities. So, many good questions and thank you for that. So if we flip the page, we have a number of programs. I won't walk through all of those, but we do have a program that a lot of our communities like. Where we maintain a register of your residents who do not want solicitors to knock on their doors. It's called the program. We work with local policing agencies. We maintain master database. Very many communities require people knocking on doors to get to bed. Somebody files for that, we get a call. We have worked with that potential vendor to give them a list of all the people who said, please don't knock on the door. And then for all of those people who say, I don't want anything to be knocked on door once a year, we send a sticker that you put it in that door or a window. And then we give them a mechanism that if somebody really goes to bother them, they can call very quickly. Reach out. It's pretty seamless. Most receives seem to be very much like it the day after the spend all the necessary time after the We give community event sponsorships. You probably hear all of yourselves all over the time, hey, we're having a holidays. Would the board of commissioners sponsor this? So NOPEC as a part of the membership gives every community between 500 and 5000 dollars for most kind of thing. So that if you're having holidays, you have presents. That's about 300,000. And again, that is paid for in the same kind of negotiation, took off a part of what we would have put in grants and put in same pot of money we just buy. We have a number of products that people can buy. The knot in the shoe fits every foot. So we have a normal NOPEC program has renewable energy credit backing to the state requirements, which are going But we also have folks who like fixed price. Like a one-year price, two-year price, people who want 100% green product, people who are not any green product. We have all of those things available. So about seven or eight different choices that are residential, so this is special to somebody who move through and will cost isolation. We have a program where we buy energy audits to small businesses. We pay for probably 75% of the cost of that audit. We also put together a NOPEC preferred vendor program for the energy audits. If you go to get an energy audit, you're a small business, you'll typically wait 16 to 20 weeks. We have a program where we basically pay to advance our customers from their front lines. We have a handful of preferred vendors who do that, so. Customer, small business who wants to go through that program, they call and we're return call within 24 hours and guarantee process within two weeks and to get their report within two weeks after that. So it's 30 days start to finish, which is about the fastest we've ever heard of. Again, just trying to make sure to beat the shop owner, just trying to get a new loan, you can get that up and get it timely. That's what the next two slides are about. I'm sorry. I already mentioned our pace program is related to the residential pace program. But for governments, including you all, you would be all people for this as well. We do loans of up to a billion dollars for a project. The rates are at about 5% for a five-year loan. As they go up a little higher, as you get to 15, they five, two, three. Very competitive. And because they're real estate based, those, those come with your tax bills. It's essentially off talent. So we've had a whole bunch of small businesses that were doing major expansions and didn't have to worry about this kind of lending hurting their credit limits, their working capital loans. It's a tremendous program. They're pretty expensive loans to do, but they have a part of the benefit of one expense is underrated by We have a regular lending program that we call Savings Through Energy, a sort of efficiency program, step program. It's the same thing, but that's a traditional loan. If people prefer traditional loan, it can get up to 100,000. NOPEC currently represents about 50,000 small businesses in those 249 communities. The average small business is a lawyer's office, doctor's office, gas station, custard stand in the summer. And every other kind of small business you can think of probably have several hundred pizza shops. They don't need to borrow a million dollars at a time. They need a new walking cooler. They need a new pizza oven. They need a new HVA system. They need new windows in their meeting rooms. Those are the kind of requests that we see for these dollars. This loan process is underwritten conventionally, typically turning these loans around in under two weeks. So again, the goal is to help people help as quickly as possible. And both of these programs, I can tell you that's zero forecourt. Careful on the underwriting side. Today. As soon as I say that.
Based on words, correct.
Yeah, there is credit. Yeah, you, you have to have reasonable credit.
Right.
You have to, the building has to be not only leveraged, so it can't be more than 80, 20 now. Another basic standard things you see at bank to bank.
Right.
Except that we try to do it in areas where banks are a little more uncomfortable. We have another few mental 49 communities, probably have 150 downtowns. Where keeping the businesses that are thriving, working in, in the the time when online buying is decimating that, when big box stores are decimating that, has become something that every mayor Has become something that every mayor. So we really gear these things to quick action in challenging parts of community or needed to struggle. That's really. And by the way. We don't know anybody else that can. There's a little more on how that works. Form of twenty nineteen. I was negotiating a contract a number of years ago. They sent me out in the lobby, waiting in this large Floridian waiting room. And there was pictures of all of the things that this company's foundation gave. And when I walked in, I said. I'd like to have some money from your foundation, my foundation. He said, you have a foundation? Said, soon you can give me some money, I'll start. So long story short, NOPEC Foundation thousand. Fifth year, sixth year. The first given they gave us in twenty twenty to food banks, including. Mission here in Warren, some others that gave food out throughout. That was about quarter million dollars. Since then, we now have had third round giving away about two hundred two thousand dollars a year. Those are really for those who have nothing to do with them. They don't need to have anything. My favorite example is Sabra Township in Astoria County. Lost its Coast Guard on station. Through federal banking cuts. When we were looking at a response time to somebody in trouble, would have had to come all the way from the venture area. So this would be an hour boat ride. If somebody were at the extreme part of that. Worried about that. It came to our foundation, filled out the application. They asked for a lot more money than the guidelines gave. Board there liked it. So they set up a challenge and gave them, I think, forty five thousand commissioners that matched it. That became a great story. Somebody locally read it in the newspaper and donated a half a million dollar boat to the effort. And all of a sudden, they went from having no response to having a severe state of the art response. Predominantly, I like to say, our foundation takes some interest. Sometimes it takes drop the bucket, get the bucket full. And that is the job of the foundation that's efficient minded. Where you can bring your toughest programs, all of your townships to join and you would be eligible. The recipients of those can be the themselves. It can be not for profits that serve. So we've had. Charities has been a recipient, food banks have been recipients. So YHCA was a recipient. So there's. If they're not for profits and they're serving your community, they're just a donor. That's it. That's essentially a two minute, okay, ten minute, okay, fifteen minute version of our, of our. Notion of how and why we serve. We would love an opportunity to be part of a bid. That we would do our best to put our best foot forward and probably remind you of all this again at that time. We think it's a value proposition. We would be honored to be included in that process, choosing that one. And we would also be very honored. I'll stop. Any questions? Commissioners or anybody?
Yeah, there's a lot to digest.
I mean, there is, sure. I see that there's a lot to the program that, you know, could benefit small business. A lot of grant opportunities that probably nobody else does. I don't know if anybody that does offer, so.
We think it's the most unique value proposition business. And it's driven again by the fact that our owners. Said, could you fix this? Right? The Doug Frankl's of the world's housing problem, can you help you fix it? And our mission is to try to figure out how to help you fix those. That's the only reason we exist.
And I have spent time with NOPEC down in Columbus for.
Yeah, we've been in a lot of towns this program. Probably half of our members are.
Yeah.
Either under the commissioners umbrella, like you do your aggregation here or. There are counties where the townships. I think ninety five percent. We're about service. We get government. Three quarters of my people have been in government as I was. And the rest are just. Any other questions? I appreciate you letting us go first. It's very kind of you. Well, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate.
All right. If you have a question, I'll leave some of my cards. You have questions, feel free to. Give me a shout. Obviously have a stack. All right. Thanks so very much. Enjoy the rest of the sunshine. Is your fair already over, right? I'm a, I'm a mortgage kind of guy. Our fair is this week, so.
Hot dry is better than cold and muddy. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Autumn.
Commissioners. Move forward with agenda item twelve, I believe it is. So I'll go over agenda item twenty really quick. First, Nick talking, planning commission. This is for the home sewer treatment system. Their HST is great that we go after every year. We've identified five households that are qualified to receive assistance. So those bid packets are going to be available. It says now that'll be tomorrow. At our, our offices at one eighty five East Market Street. Those bids we do on Tuesday, September ninth, when it's open that day, that's three P M. Against just five households that are income qualified. Or septic system replacement bid through a, through a great program that our office goes after. The other items that I wanted to discuss. Happened at our planning commission meeting, all, all of the commissioners were in attendance for that. But it's based on our. Proposed fee increase that the planning commission supported. First woman passing out is the floodplain fee. Our staff went in and looked at. Surrounding counties to see what they charge. Just to, to make sure that we're in line with other areas. We charge a flat fifty dollar rate for everything. Actually, people doesn't charge all. There's Giaga and Mahoney. Giaga has a hourly fee of sixty dollars per hour for. So depending on how complex that would be, they can rack up to thousand dollars. Same thing with Portage, they have eighty dollar per hour rate. So because aside from Asher Bueller, who does not charge at all, we are actually the lowest rate when you combine everything in. We wanted to make a proposal to update those to reflect work that goes into them. And we split it out from residential and commercial. Commercials are generally a lot more complicated. They involve more. So those who would be a higher rate, so the application fee we were proposing for residential will go from fifty dollars to a hundred twenty five. And merch will go from fifty dollars to two twenty five. Once you compare some of the, the add-ons and additional work for the other counties, that still keeps a solid rate. The other proposal that we're putting in there is we do not currently have a fine working without permit. One other county does. We also use our building inspector's office to do our enforcement. They issue our stop work orders. They do, they, you know, they go around and find people that are working without a permit. To include a fine. A permit. To both that residential and commercial that are in line with. What our building inspectors are already doing to try to keep things synonymous. So it's. Not this gets one fee that gets a, try to keep it in line. I also wanted to point out a couple of the townships, other counties that we looked at. Charge per site inspection. We're including three site inspections with our permit fee. We figured looking at the ones that have passed. We normally do three or less unless it gets more complicated. We have a proposal that anything after three, we charge an additional sixty dollars per inspection. And those are the fees. I did, these are not on the agenda. They were passed by the planning commission to be supported to go to commissioners for approval. Instead of putting them on and. You know, making you take a look today and book tomorrow. We wanted to present these to you ahead of time so that you have time next week to think. Come back to any questions, any discussion items. Before we put them on, not force your hand within twenty four hours to. To try to make all the information decisions.
And just to make it clear, this isn't a money made.
No, this is not. We're still losing money.
We're losing money.
This is the, the, the amount of time and paperwork and staff time and paperwork. This is not going to cover costs of what's done. It's just updated or fees that. As long as I've been there, I've not been updated. I think these fees are still from two thousand. So they're, they're outdated or lower than all of our surrounding communities. And it doesn't come close to covering staff time it takes to do these reviews and issuance permits for the inquiries. And even with the increase, it will not, but it'll. Be more than it was. And then the other one that was also passed by the planning commission support to take some commissioners. Our last planning commission meeting was for our subdivision regulations. Again, staff took the time to look at all the surrounding communities. And again, we are the lowest. I don't know the last time that these were increased or, and I don't know when they were set. But right now, we charge ten dollars per. Anytime somebody splits a property or it's ten dollars. For our preliminary plans, replats and final plans, we charge fifty dollars plus ten dollars per split. You look at the surrounding communities. They're all charging at least a hundred dollars. So Asher Duel is a hundred dollars per split. Jugg is a hundred fifty dollars per split. Portage is a hundred fifty dollar flat rate fee plus twenty five dollars for every. Split over two. We are the lowest by far in that category. So again, we're, we're proposing to increase those rates a little bit higher. To reflect some of the work that goes into that and go from ten dollars to twenty five dollars per split. Or per resulting lot, to clear the language. Cause sometimes people are, I'm only splitting it once. There's, but there's two lots. They don't understand the fee or the rate. So we're, we're trying to clear that language. So it's per resulting lot, not per split anymore. Increase that from ten to twenty five dollars. Deed variances, we don't have very many of those. But that's, that's a, an action that comes through our office. And if you look at that, you know, Giaga is charging three hundred. We're not charging anything. That's something that has to go through our board, creates additional time and work. We're proposing that be a fifty dollar fee anytime that the variance is required to go through. Preliminary plan, which is probably the most work when somebody comes to do a major subdivision. They have, they have to have. Geology done, they have to have survey work done. They have to have a lot of stuff. We have pre-scheduled meeting where we create a county engineer, sanitary engineer, the health district, the soil and water. There's a lot of work going behind that and that's flat. Fifty dollars plus ten dollars per resulting lot. We want to increase that to two hundred dollars and then again, the twenty five dollars per resulting lot. Extension, which we currently do not charge for preliminary plan. We would recommend that be improved to fifty dollars. Revised preliminary plan, we would keep that at current fifty dollar rate, but then include the twenty five dollars per resulting lot increase. And our replat would remain the same fifty dollars plus twenty five dollars per resulting lot. We would recommend increasing our final plan. Cause that again, takes a little bit of work from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. And then keep the, the same format it does plus twenty five dollars per resulting lot. So that twenty five dollars is going to stay consistent. Revising some of the preliminary plan replat, final plat fees. Based on the work that's going into those items. Again, this is not going to generate any kind of revenue or cover the cost for. What the, the amount of work and staff time that's gone is decent. But it will bring us a little bit closer to some of our neighboring communities that are still, again, if you look at cheap. A lot higher. You know, I, I, I keep pointing, pointing to Giaga. They have. You know, their replat is three thousand dollars plus two hundred fifty dollars per each additional lot of a tank. That there. We're not even coming close to that, but we would like to update these to be more aligned. And there was one thing that we are currently not charging all of it in such a gap was that we wanted to add as a road dedication. We've recently done educational highway and, and. That takes a lot of background work, a lot of review work. We wanted to start charging it to be of two hundred dollars for any. Yeah, not going to cover the amount of time and man hours that goes into it. But we wanted to provide this information to you before it hit the agenda again, so that. You can look at the information that we've already gathered from the neighboring communities, look at the current lot, like that, current fees that they provide. Our current fees and our proposed fees in there. If you have questions, comments or concerns. You don't have to do that. We'll be placing this on next week's agenda because the planning commission did vote to support these incentives with commissioners. But we wanted to discuss it, present it to you. And give you some time to think about questions and, and follow over. But with that, that's the end of my spiel. If you had any questions right now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Next, the commissioners have been. Made aware of this. We didn't vote on it. We abstained from votes, but. I think in addition to this, I think it's fairly reasonable commissioners, but also. I think that this brings up a good point about some. Other areas of the county, especially in our, where some of the things that we had discussed before in those rates. That we are currently charging are from. I think the late nineties and the two thousands. So we really need to do our homework and start bringing ourselves up to par with, you know. And it's not a moneymaker. This is, we're losing, it's not supposed to make money, but yet. You, you don't want, kind of like in the sanitary division too, where we're losing. You know, monies. So I don't personally, I think that, you know, to take the planning commissions. You know, their homework that they have done, I, I would agree with, with these rates.
My, my comment is I want to commend you for bringing it to us far in advance so we can. Look at it, you know, if we have questions, we can get back to you because. Far too many times we're presented with something that air commissioners. Decide on it right now. So I, I want to commend you for bringing it to us far in advance. So you can look at it. You can study it and then we have questions we can give back to you on it. So. Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome. And that, that was actually director agreed that, that made that decision. It was. I think partially based on watching some of our other colleagues' experiences, bringing it to the table. So we wanted to make sure we had all the background research in our neighboring communities so you can look at it and compare. You know, I, I did, some of those numbers are not apples to apples. Actually, almost none of them are. Nobody has a same fee rate. And that's why I pointed out some of them are charging hourly rates and an hourly review. I mean. One could take me two hours, one could take me eight hours. You're charging sixty dollars an hour. That, that greatly changed the fee. We don't personally believe that's fair to residents to not know if their fee is going to be at that time. So we wanted to keep that flat rate. Again, we're not going to cover the cost of, of what it takes us to get in there, but. They said the floodplain fees, I don't think have been updated since two thousand four and. I don't know if subdivision fees have ever been updated since you adopted subdivisions in the early nineties. So. Or last amendment. So it's. I, I probably passed due. And we are woefully behind all of our neighboring communities in what they're charging. But we also don't believe we should be charging residents for developments. So modest increases, but.
Much needed.
Much needed, much, much past it.
Good, thank you, Nick.
Thank you, commissioners.
Um, I guess we'll get to, take a look at that, we've already pretty much. Done this week, explored this the last meeting and then the meeting before that, um, so we'll get it on the agenda. For the next week, I think, right, Nick?
Yes, next week we'll be submitting.
Okay, agenda item one. To dispense the reading of the Minnesota workshop dated August twelfth. And also the regular meeting August thirteenth of two thousand twenty five. Uh, two, we approve the bills. Three, um, we're showing to a higher vice code five seven oh five point one four, transfer monies. As submitted by the county auditor, as listed, EMA. Or to approve the technical appropriations submitted by the auditor. Uh, between the dates of August seventh, August thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Same as the, uh, agenda item three, August seventh through August thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Five, to improve appropriations submitted by the county auditor. Same dates, August seventh through August thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and we have. Uh, budgetary explanations here that go along with it, any questions, commissioners on?
Hey, yeah, I got a question, all these ones that are coming out of, oh, one, like I see the auditor, we approved that last week. Central court, commissioners, quarter appeals, and I see at the bottom the share fifty two thousand. Three thousand, is that additional funds or is that already within their budget? We're out of the town.
Chris, this is their auditor's office, those are already in their budgets, and they're just moving them from, uh, one account to another. Uh, Sharon and I had talked about something we wanted to just kind of explain to you about the additional budget amounts that you guys approved. Last week, as we were blocking, uh, what we, uh, had decided that would be the easiest way for Sharon is to, uh, put those on as additional appropriations in, um. I believe it was a K roll account in those departments.
Correct.
And then we would be transferring, uh, the departments would be able to transfer them themselves, so that we shared it and have to enter, you know, wait for departments to. Provide her with big documents or, uh, maybe with any timing. Uh, we're the first ones, I think, to do that, so we have ours on there, and you guys did a lot of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh. Part of that amount was needed in the account that she put that into, so we're only, um, uh, moving a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars approximately. I know we have board of elections that's going on for next week too, and that you'll see that as a transfer. And that's because we did the additional appropriation, shared the additional appropriation already. Do you have any questions on that part of it?
Chair Taylor, Commissioner's Office, the additional appropriations is the budget that you essentially allocate to that department, that particular department. So it was just easier to move to one line item, and they can disperse it as needed. So you will see this on the agenda every week.
Part of the other trouble county auditor, just to clarify, this whole i- item is transfers, there's no additional money for anything, they're transferring it. Within that fund from one line item to another.
Good. Good. Thank you. This is for the budget commission and auditors on. Mentioning that's Chrissy.
Christie's is sharing, auditor's office, uh, this, the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is required by a higher vice code fifty seven oh five thirty four, we do this annually, uh, last year, the resolution was approved on September fifth, twenty twenty four. Um. The first get schedule A of this resolution just lists the county's levies and what we're estimating as, um. Uh, levy proceeds for the next fiscal year, and then schedule B is listing all of the county levies and their expiration, or the dates they were passed. And that gets filed with the budget commission, and then we do have it on file for our auditors. If it has to state auditor, well, we have third party auditors down in partnership, I get, um, to be in compliance with the higher vice code, this has to be passed. By the legislative authority for October first. And all local governments, half the masses, townships, villages, cities, special districts, they have. First, and then school districts do it in this range, so. Questions?
Yes.
Excellent.
Uh, seven, auditor?
Uh, Christie's is Sarah, auditor's office, this is just the then and now for, um. June, you do pass this about once a month, I'm a little behind on this one, so, um, you reach out, fly, uh. But this is to keep us in compliance with the higher revised code fifty seven oh five point forty one D. And that's just saying, you know, then at the time that these purchases were made, we had the money and we still have it now. Uh, you know, we are supposed to encumber into a purchase order prior to, uh, entering into liability, unfortunately, that doesn't always happen. We still have to shoot at skills, and this kind of is an, an exception that keeps us, uh, in compliance.
Thank you, Chrissy. Anything the auditor wants to add, any, no, everything's good?
Yeah.
Good, I like your smile.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Have a great day.
Um. Okay, agenda item eight, notify, you know, permanent liquor control, the public hearing is not requested, uh, liquor permit application is listed. Uh, max convenience of Port Hill Township, Mayberry, and Adamas Circle K, which is great. Well. Now we'll move on to, is Gary here?
Yeah, great, he's always behind, I'll move on out, yeah.
I thank you, Commissioner. Um, Gary Schaefer, engineer's office, number nine is to award the only bid we received. Um, and to enter in the contract US bridge for the purchase of material for the superstructures. The new fifteen, uh, suffer push road bridge and the green fourteen weight group grid. Uh, that's going to replace superstructures, so that would be the beams, the decky, the twin steel tube railing on those two bridges, we'll be doing the work in house. Purchase the steel for those two projects, uh, through a grant, uh, Ohio Public Works Division. Uh, number ten is to compare with our, those are roadway, flying skills, current road, all replacement, under the oven. Here with our offices, ramp the roadway, there may be listed. We've been the flowers that people of our office, the ramp, special hall in front of us, we still boil them. There's two listed.
You're the thing. Commissioner, did you have something to say to Gary, I think, I commented that I was on a home view yesterday and they're leveling all that out?
Yeah, I, I kind of listened to that last week, but I really took a lot of time and effort in it. I'll only do the, what you should make, I'm sure the residents over there looks a lot better, they pleased it up, they leveled it out. Just thank you for saying.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah, I don't mind coordinating that and using the relationships we have with them, I know they are committed. It's our busy season, so it's hard to. Um, it's nice to see that we're out there, you know, it's the best. Now what I gotta ask you is if we could do something other township, because the weeds are growing, the, the mountains, and then you got the weeds, and you got the cement and the piling, you know. Right on the exit there, um, I don't know if we could talk, I, I had mentioned it last week when, uh, the ladies were here from Warren Township. And I think all those areas really on our exits, anytime you exit an area where you come into a, a community, uh. They should, I mean, if they do that, I can understand, but they can't become mountains with weeds and, you know what I mean, it just, it's, it doesn't, doesn't welcome a, it's not welcoming to a community. So, uh, not to put, I don't want to put any more work on you, Gary, but maybe we'll discuss that later down the road in Hubbard Township, right? Truck World, Lobz, Flying J, that area, you know, that exit, yeah. So, thank you, Gary, thank you. Um, okay.
Sure, I got a question for Gary also, I got a call yesterday, Gary, the, uh, guy that owns End of the Calmons in Mesopotamia. Um. Sent me some disturbing pictures, Donning Road, they had the second incident, a horse broke both its front legs on the road.
Yeah, I got the notice, yeah, got calls from trustees, okay.
Is there anything we're going to be able to do up there to level or smooth the roads a little better?
We could talk about it, we did a lot of penetrate patchiness, this is a little different incident where two bolts were shared on the back of the. Buggy caused the accident, so not sure, we're all gonna.
Yeah. As, as long as you get back with them, that's what he asked, he said he had called, it couldn't get only suddenly yesterday, so they called me.
But I, that's the first thing this morning, yeah, I got two calls from. Perfect, thank you.
Good. Okay, uh, Shelley's here?
Yeah.
Child family service?
Thirteen, be on thirteen already?
Why?
Yes.
Apparently I need to pay attention a little bit more. Uh.
Well, you gotta skip that a little as well.
Uh, so, we're just asking.
Yeah, we did.
Just deal with that.
Pretty good, I'll, I'll, everybody's getting a little bit combined later.
No, that's fine.
They sent me a picture of the floodstain for them, it's not ever seen.
It's all right.
Good, good.
So we're, we're just asking that the commissioners approve, uh, this Jen, uh, Mathlick. Who is the current housing divisional director at the Access Family Services to. Serve as the committee member on our family services planning committee. We've been informed that Ms. Anne Face, who was the director of the domestic violence and visitation at some place safe, is no longer in that role. You have a vacancy, we need to, so that's basically what we're bringing this to you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Does John have vacation?
He's riding the hurricane out in the, uh, outer banks.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, he, they just, uh, evacuated.
Well, I don't know if it's evacuated, I talked to him this morning and he said that they were, he's, they're batting him down and, and.
He's tough, he's tough guy.
Yeah.
Nice to know. Okay.
Parlor?
Sorry.
Daryl Donegan, uh, facilities.
Sarah.
Uh, this is to authorize it, learn to advertise for sealed bids for the, uh, stone building, uh, roof and HVAC renovations.
I'm sorry, Daryl, go ahead, I.
I wanted to say not me. Oh, I wanted to try to call you, not me.
Yeah.
Daryl.
He's on.
All right, number fifteen, um, to approve the renewal of service agreement with Johnson Controls Fire Protection. Um, in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty six dollars, sixty two cents. Um, that's for proprietary, uh, service agreement with, uh, for the administration building. Uh, Trumbull County Jail, Trumbull County Courthouse and.
Make sure to see, we have, oh, we're looking at, uh, the steps for the stone building, we're, we're looking at some brands and things, okay.
It's not a stone building, it's a lot of. Cast the button, whatever.
We're not talking about.
So. Hey commissioners, cast the gun out real quick.
Right.
Uh, Martin Jones facilities, um, as you know, the law library steps is pretty much the verbal, um. Uh, I seen a couple of, um, young law students walking up and down on them yesterday. Um, with y'all, I shouldn't, just close them off.
They were closed off.
They were yellow taped.
They didn't have.
Yeah, they were yellow taped, uh, but I'm talking about like a chain and a lock, completely just close them off, putting signs up at the doors. Uh, my issue is that there are lawyers that still occupy the doors during the weekends. Uh, we tried to get the key fob moved to another location in the building, but the issue was that we don't pay for the building service in that building. So we can't, they want to charge us upwards of thirty five hundred just to move the fob, but we don't service that. Law library do, um, so I guess in the meantime, this job building, we just need to close it off, and they formed, uh, lawyers or whoever uses them doors. That they either have to use, I guess, the back door, probably try to give keys or, or something, but, um, we do need to close some steps off. Essentially. I don't want to see nobody getting hurt going up or down those steps, um, and then we also have the public. We tend to play on those steps as well, so, uh.
And I thought we already authorized to close it off, but again, we didn't.
It was last year, but he said must just.
But I thought we did it again this year.
Yeah, that I don't anymore.
Yeah, somebody yellow taped it, um, we just put some chains in it because.
I, I, I think it needs to be closed off, I agree. Absolutely.
Okay, we'll close them off.
Uh, you think there is an alternative side interest that they were utilizing?
Yeah.
You know, and.
Yeah, and then just a matter of course, the lawyers could utilize some steps for weekend purposes. Uh, when they come in and read whatever flow of material they need. Uh, it just letting, uh, get their name downstairs, know, know, warn, know the lawyers that we are going to close some steps off.
Is it going to work with just a chain and a lock or, I, is that going to be enough to?
Well, there's never enough, people could still hop the chain if they want to.
Be almost, uh.
Can we, Mr.?
Actual fence.
Can I suggest that we put some signage up so that we're protecting ourselves, obviously, it's a liability.
Sure.
It has been a liability, we tried the caution tape twice, it continues to get ripped down. We obviously know caution tape's not going to work, so at this point, I think that we need to do our diligence and put up a proper signage. Do not enter at your own risk, and then also, um, do something to make sure it's more of a solidified chain versus a. Piece of caution tape that you can continue to rip, also, inclement weather, to my understanding, had we had some issues with the caution tape as well. So it's not just that people were ripping it down, but also the fact that, you know, you have a bad storm come through and it's, it's just tape, so it comes down.
Right.
And you're, to, to Harlan's point, I mean, I, we watched people jump over the tape, go under the tape, you know, and go, like, yeah, they do it, and. We need to have some sort of sign.
That's why I'm even thinking.
No, not during the day, I mean, so during business, that works there, okay.
Close it off, it's from which we want to, so.
Well, I don't just.
Yeah, but it's the lawyers that we got, or we don't know which lawyers of our association are using those doors. So if the lawyers is coming through the doors on the weekends, uh, we have to inform them to start using the doors from their backside. Or get the lawyers some keys, that way they can start utilizing the right doors and they're not going up those steps. Uh, like Alex says, a lot of the thing, just don't want to, I'm getting hurt.
We can, we can structure fencing.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. With a chain, a chain isn't a lock, is it going to be enough, we, we need to like have an actual, like a fence, maybe a couple posts and just fence off. Well, until further, you know, until further notice, that would.
Let's see y'all's discretion, y'all won't make that direction, I think that.
Well, here's my question, if there's an engineer, do you guys have some of that plastic fence that we could borrow? You could get through that, so I, I would do more likely if you're doing downtown, so it's been coming off, you can rent a six foot high fence.
Right.
That'd be more, you know, permanent, not permanent, but if you have a permanent solution, long term.
Okay. Uh, we'll get the fence that are, we'll get it closed off, yeah.
Or at least, so, I mean, we don't have any knowledge of when, you know, the brand or funding is secured, so. Again, to what's here, it, it's more of a long term scenario, if we're past that short term, just taking it off, it's time to make sure that we're done.
Okay. Uh, good. Yep, pardon, Daryl, can I use? Do you have anybody here from, uh, some prevention council? No, okay, so this, uh, sixteen, to appoint Ms. Tracy Lidle. Trumbull County Children's Services to serve as a county representative on the Ohio Children's Trust Fund Northeast Regional Prevention Council. Uh, this is a, she'll serve a two-year term beginning August twenty 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 five, ending August twentieth, twenty seven, and she replaces. Ms. Tracy Seymour Evans, who will be transitioning into the chair role in September, and who is appointed as county prevention specialist. Uh, by the Board of Commissioners on November second of twenty twenty two. Um. You hear Alex, do you know anything about this?
Uh.
What this is? We're here, read. Okay, well. I don't think anybody knows.
She reached out to me via email, so I, if you could address her via email with a question, Jim.
So I if you could address her via email with a question, Jim.
Um. Gary?
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, Commissioner's item seventeen. This is uh, within the union. Uh, we only have one bid on this position. It was uh, Elizabeth Zaworski. And so it's being promoted from a probably part two to a utility account to get to a a range talk. Uh, going uh, item eighteen, this is the Anderson Water Improvement Project. We had that public hearing on July thirtieth twenty twenty-five. Uh. The people pressed opposition at the public hearing and also. Um. They had the opportunity to express their support or opposition through the mail. We haven't gotten any written evidence. Uh, on this uh. Public hearing. So basically it came out to be sixty-seven point four five percent in support of the project. Thirty-two point five five percent opposed. And that's based on benefit from footage. Uh, going to number nineteen, this is the notice of proceed for Z-Tech to go ahead and get started on this. Uh, so a broken front.
We've already gone through one. Um. Okay, so that's the end of the agenda items. Commissioners, one thing I did want to bring up. And I spoke briefly commissioner with you about this concerning Foxconn. Uh, I was contacted today by SoftBank. Uh, their um. They uh. Sorry. They have noticed that there was press releases put out by Japan. We had been told not to comment. Um, it's already out there, so. They did say that they are going to move forward with the project. Um, they will begin to visit with the commissioners. Within a period of two weeks. It was also brought to my attention that they just had a sizable uh, investment in Intel Ohio. Based um, two billion dollar investment. Um. It has also been said that there will not be a data center at Lordstown Plant. They will be providing infrastructure. And components for data storage. In what basically is considered storage containers. That can be shipped throughout the world. Um. These storage containers, they will have one on display outside of the building. And um. SoftBank is now. All the information is out there. As you know, Valley Vision yesterday. I had made a comment that, you know. We should not be. You know, giving any information on this. Well. Uh, Japan blew that out of the water, so. Um. You uh, I've also been told that that it will hit. The press release will be given to the commissioners. Uh, prior. And that this will, it looks like this will be taking place the first quarter of next year. So we have probably a few months to work with. Uh, it and they will employ up to sixteen hundred to two thousand people. I asked about the types of jobs that would be created. And they had said that the jobs would be anywhere from food service to line workers. To high-tech jobs. So it's full spectrum. So. This is a great opportunity for Trumbull County. I feel more comfortable releasing the information. Last week we had the information. Now that it's public. I think we should all, you know, start getting ourselves uh, together and like Valley Vision, we had a meeting yesterday. We need to start working with our developers. And try to get them on board. With this project moving forward because we're gonna need a lot of housing moving forward here soon. I just wanted to bring this out. Commissioner and I spoke a little bit about this earlier. Since Valley Vision yesterday and the fact that I had made a comment. Don't say anything. Well. It was already out there, so. Um, just a little more information to share with you. So that you know exactly what's happening there.
Yeah, but they they asked you not to say anything and they asked us not to say anything.
They did, but.
Right, so we would just follow the early.
Well, they asked the chamber as well and the chamber had come out and had. You know, had given um. You know, their assessment of what what was happening, so. Um.
And once this product, this uh, project is moved and it and it gets.
Moral come out.
Gets finalized, then everybody will have their ample time to.
Right.
To uh.
My my concern was.
Let's get, let's get the commitment. Let's get it here and.
Right. My concern was when this was released that they would. You know how these things work that, you know, but he assured me this project. Today, this morning at eight-thirty this morning. This project is moving forward. So I think it's.
It's great news.
A good, a very good news and 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 the fact too, that they took a large position in Intel. Which I believe will provide additional infrastructure and um, you know, for data, for their chips, for data storage. So I think they're getting all their and apples in one basket here. Um.
One thing I had a conversation yesterday afternoon also. Um, one thing else happened here. They do have four hundred employees at the plant now.
Yes.
And they're retaining them all until this happens. And these people have been retained through the transition.
Right.
Now, they're not making charters anymore. They're they're basically prepping the site. Many of them have been paid to go volunteer in the community. Uh, but it just shows what type of company Foxconn is that they didn't lay anybody off. They're still paying them. And then they'll be putting them back to retool in the factory. For this uh, this new expansion. And this new expansion also, as we were told. Uh, we all view General Motors Plant as a huge factory. This company's told us they need more space, so they're actually filed permits with Lordstown. Uh, in the zoning to increase the size uh, of the plant, so. That shows us that, yeah, this two thousand jobs thing is is real.
Right.
And and these are good paying jobs. These are tech type jobs. There it is production line. Um, but they will be manufacturing the components. For AI and only data centers, but AI components that's gonna be used all over the world. And as we saw it. The day President Trump was sworn in. His first meeting was with was with the owner of uh. Uh, the company that bought the property there. Um, so Mr. Louis, I believe it is, was was there standing next to the president when they announced Stargate and the president said. You're gonna hear a lot about this name, you know, remember it. Don't forget it. You're gonna hear a lot about it. Here it is.
Well, Commissioner, Commissioner, you had mentioned, we would like to hopefully have Trump in our.
It's it's open that you know, maybe the president will come in.
You know.
Is this is huge.
Well, we have Intel, we have Foxconn and we.
Over the state of Ohio, a question for our valley.
And and I did, I got a call yesterday from Senator Houston and that's what he said. Kinda congratulating on this and said that he's gonna keep an eye on it in the Senate and see this thing through and we're blessed to have this.
President has an open invitation to come to our valley.
And I want to make another comment about Valley Vision. When speaking with SoftBank, uh, we he he's aware, uh, you know, uh, Sean Callahan. He's with the Government Affairs. He is aware of Valley Vision and also he had mentioned that if they could be of service or help to Valley Vision. That they, those are the type, like a Kimberly Clark. That they will come in and maybe there's some, you know, assistance that they can also help in Kelly Vision with. So those are the kind of partnerships that that we're looking at here. In Trumbull County, in the Mahoney Valley in general, so. Good, good stuff. Good stuff right around the corner here.
Great stuff.
Yeah, great stuff.
Thanks.
All right, you mix out of Kimberly Clark and we're talking almost twenty-five hundred jobs.
You're looking.
Two thousand new jobs in the next year.
If that doesn't count, it's gonna come in alongside.
So, so.
So we're looking at a great future in Trumbull County and I I I don't.
You're not always playing with the press wants us to say, but you know, some point in time you can.
Right.
The main thing is, let's get, let's get the commitment for everything.
Okay. Do we have any Beth?
Hi.
You can go first, Dimitri. You've got to see the table. Okay. I have to make sure to go on this workforce building and board. Um, it's that time of of the year for us that we're uh, in the past with the workforce uh. Board appoints, appointees and reappointees. Uh, it was staggered almost monthly. So what we've done over the past year or two is we are grouping it into twice a year. Uh, so what we have is we have the next batch of applicants. We've got a mix of uh. Incumbents and new folks. Uh, what I can tell you under the uh. The standard operating procedure is, as we discussed before, if we're able to absorb or take on all of the applicants, we can move forward quickly. If there if there are too many to maintain our uh. Our our board structure that's required by the state, then of course, then the gentleman would uh. Select who you would want. Under this circumstance, we are able to absorb them all. Uh, and bring them on because we anticipate the loss of a few uh, in the near future. Uh. The reason I'm bringing it to you now is because there's two questions in this list, so I got them on top. Uh, to see if you want to bring them on. Uh, I don't have any problem. One is actually, as we were discussing at the Valley Vision yesterday, what is a aerospace workforce developer. Which is nice as we were talking about things in that in that Valley Vision. And then one is a newer uh, person. Uh, really doesn't have all that much experience in in being on board, but won't take her on as well because she'll have a unique perspective and in warehousing. So I'm giving these to you. Um, I'll take your time with them. Um, I'm I'm gonna bring one next week, so that you got time to review. If you have any questions for me about about what they do. Or any of them, any. If there's any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'll be happy to.
Dimitri, how many do we need?
Uh, about eight or ten. Well, we are, my board is about forty individuals. We have, it's a very large board, but it is required by federal law. We have so many uh. Uh. Here is, uh, actually I got included into that in your uh, packet is the actual uh. Workforce certification where it identifies folks needed on the left will be at least uh, two labor representations, registered apprenticeships. Fire providers, higher education, those are, these are mandatory uh, board members. Economic community development, Wagner Pizer, vote rehab, and then on the right is are the employers. Orders will need to have a fifty-one percent majority, so. Employer, our board is is employer driven. As far as our our. So I gave it uh, everything kind of for you to review. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'll place these on the agenda unless something, unless it's a no from one from the gentleman.
How do people, how are they made aware that uh? They can become a board member?
If you look on the left-hand side of your folder, there's the standard operating procedure. We do a uh, we I I contact uh, uh. Commissioner's office. We place an ad. We also uh, advertise in various other areas. Uh, we 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 also post on uh, on the commissioner's website, on our Facebook, and our workforce building within. We solicit business members additional, uh, we reach out additionally to Bright Energy, Reserve, Trades, MDFC, uh, Business Bureau. We contact uh. Uh, the chambers as well, post, put things out, so we we reach out to all the business organizations throughout the area to try to get those business representatives. Which we did. Um, the the three new ones are actually came from Mahoney Valley Manufacturers. They're pretty big players in this area. So I'm not happy about it.
You you said between eight to ten, I mean, you could use ten, because there's like twelve here.
No, we can, we need them all. Yes. We can use them all, yes, because as you can see, on this, this this identifies our, this is my little cheat sheet for staying compliant with the state, so. As we add these folks on, you you do have, still have the majority, fifty-one percent. Uh, because the words have to represent fifty, fifty percent.
And fifty-one percent.
Then you don't see any issue with that?
No, no, they're all, all the uh. Reappointees are standing, they they attend meetings, they're actually part of some of the sub communities, because the the sub committees is where all the work is done. Then we bring it to the workforce board meetings. Those are like ten thousand. And that's when we consider to remain as far as the direction of of what we're gonna do. And and then what I in turn do is I instruct. Get those instructions done to the um, jobs.
Well, it's good to know that you vetted them.
Yes.
In an answer, you know them and.
Yeah, I.
At least we could look at them and.
Yeah, some of these are ones like Libby Steele, I mean, those are, those are. Uh, Novellus and.
Bergen.
And John Gergen, well, he's a man.
I see. True.
Uh, maybe Ajax Taco, I mean, these are new that are coming along. Very nice. They're they're established businesses in the area. They'll be able to give us good insight. And for us, it's about perspective. It's not about uh, education and and, you know, what I, what I've done on it. It's about, the the best example I can give you is you know, a doctor is one of the highest intelligent folks in the world, but I'd rather have their HR manager than the veteran doctor, because the HR manager understands work. Doctor understands surgeries, but. So.
Sure, Commissioner's not the smartest person.
What sense? So, yeah, thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Place it on the um, agenda for next week. And I I have another agenda next week, that that regional. I was looking for earlier for. It's it wasn't on session, but since then. Which we. Post it and send it down to the slate for final group.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Miss Carmichael?
Beth Cott was Carmichael Trumbull County Tourism. I'm not quite sure how to approach this. You guys have a new relationship with K O Consulting. And last year, there was an opportunity with the Army Corps of Engineers to start working on a section twenty-two program. Um, and because there was no other department or organization last year to take that on, I took on the initial work of that. What I'm asking is if we can then pass all of this information over to K O Consulting so that they can continue um, taking the lead on advancing the project. It's actually at the contract stage right now. Um, but they could take it over on behalf of Trumbull County itself. Uh, there has been on the federal level. Uh, uh, just a little bit of pushback because Trumbull County tour, uh, using the word tourism when it's it's Army Corps, it's, you know, water quality and sedimentation studies and invasive species. So I think that um. Basically, this money is already allocated. What I'm recommending is if you, I don't think it needs to go onto an agenda, but I wasn't quite sure. But if you would like to um, agree with that, then I'm happy to sit down in a meeting. We can bring Jen, um, who is the program manager from the Pittsburgh office, onto the call. She can go through everything. I can pass all of my paperwork documentation over via Google Drive and then that it it sits better in Trumbull County's office than it does Trumbull County.
Okay, um. Commissioners, we have already discussed this. It it they're coming to us in advance, so we've always had mentioned that, you know, we appreciate, you know.
We've always, I think everybody's, this isn't offensive to me. I I think everybody around our group and table always is like, that's so far out of our lane in Trumbull County Tourism, but we were happy to carry it through for the last year. But I think with Josh Press on board to help on the the federal level, just keep the the project moving.
Mm-hmm.
But I I I was involved in this from the beginning a couple of years ago and it started with visitation of Mosquito Lake and visitation studies and then infrastructure and then it turned into while the Corps of Engineers has this grant that they could do to do sedimentation studies and water quality.
Yeah.
Which ties in with what Gary has, our fifty-year plan with nitrates and uh, monitoring that we have to do of the effluent we put back in the lake. So this is all kind of tied in with that and then you found out about the section twenty-two grant of up to a half a million dollars.
Right.
That we can obtain where the Corps of Engineers does the studies, is separate from study that Gary had asked for. This is a sedimentation study of in water quality. That we qualify for. And it will help us determine the health of Mosquito Lake for all reasons around.
A lot, yes. I think, I mean, the way it kind of came to us is uh, through our advocacy advocacy efforts locally. Uh, we were talking to Representative Joyce's office. Who then was speaking to the Army Corps and then somebody up the chain said to this program manager, call Beth at Trumbull Tourism. And so we started having a conversation about what we were looking for. We didn't know what this project or program was, but she's really the one that connected the dots. We have the scope of work already. We have the budget uh, done. Like I said, the contract, but that would need to be changed because it has Trumbull Tourism's information. I do have information from I want to say sixteen or eighteen of the um. Local governments that the. I want to say sixteen or eighteen of the um local governments that the Mosquito Creek. Um watershed touches that says that they're okay with us moving forward with this, it doesn't affect any private landowners. Um there were uh conversations a couple of years ago that we need to look at sedimentation studies because I think it's been. Twenty or thirty years and maybe, Danny, you can say more, but really Mosquito Creek Lake hasn't been dredged, it's always been a shallow lake. Um and when it's not dredged, we lose volume. And with Mosquito Lake being such an important part of. Certainly the city of Warren's Water, but as you went to the morning at Mosquito. Uh Franco Lucarelli did an amazing job of really connecting Mosquito Lake to all of our economic development projects. Um but to your point, I mean, the hydrala, the invasive species, but also the nutrient loading that is going into Mosquito Lake. This starts to address it formally, and the work is being done by Army Corps of Engineers, there's no. So there's nobody that has to go out to bid for anything, it's all being and will be done in-house. And um as we discussed last year in one of those meetings. Having the Army Corps of Engineers do their the study, then it's already there. They don't, they don't have to question a consultant, they don't have to question anybody else, they've already done the work.
One, Beth has been your baby, and I appreciate you getting the baby up to us for this, because this is something um. That I recommend we we commissioners take this off our hands. Give it to K O, I think we're almost at the finish line with that, I think this is something these guys can zip off very easily.
You definitely don't want to lose the opportunity.
And it's a great opportunity.
Again, I'm happy to continue carrying it, but I just think it it just fits right now with what you guys are working on.
But I would like to have a meeting though with the K O representative to.
Of course, like I said, and I recommend that a commissioner be on that meeting too, just because you guys are the clients. With K O Consulting, so you can. You can see where that is. I just think it's. Any questions?
And they're shaking their heads back there, yes, so.
Well, I didn't want to do anything until.
Yeah, but we'll, I'll, I'll.
Let's set up a transition meeting, Beth, and we'll make sure.
Okay.
Handle off nicely this week.
Thank you very much. I've got three other projects to replace, so thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, guys.
Should I say commissioner?
Uh huh, you're calling us, well, we are, guys. If you call this, there'd be a problem.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, that's okay. Anybody else?
Because a part of my.
Okay.
Um I'm I'm here today to talk about a so, oh, I'm sorry, Dave Larkin from Liberty, and I am with. Comfort Fubers and Comfort Care. I'm here to talk about a subject that's come up many times in the past, and I don't believe ever with this Board of Commissioners. And it's something that I think that's important, will at least make people aware of. As you know, I'm in the transportation business. At this point in time, I kind of got a little salt in the wound. I got a letter from Jobs and Family Services, they're sending out for bids for transportation. For Medicaid transportation. What they call for is ambulatory transportation services. Trumbull County Jobs and Family Services is only providing ambulatory transportation services. They have and they should be providing wheelchair services also. The other counties do, I do a lot of work from Mahoning County doing wheelchair transport. What happens then is if Jobs and Family Services is not doing the Medicaid wheelchair transports. Which are paid for by the Department of Medicaid, it has nothing to do with Trumbull County. Those particular people are going to the Trumbull County Senior Levy for wheelchair transports. And we at the levy, who we just a couple of weeks ago had a problem with having enough money in the levy. The levy is now paying for those particular trips that could be covered by the Department of Medicaid. So I don't understand why in Trumbull County. We are not doing wheelchair accessible Medicaid trips.
Well, Shelley, I knew you were gonna turn around.
I will tell you one thing, we've gone through this, and again, it's not with this Board of Commissioners before. And one of the answers that I received, and Mike's been around, well, well, we'd have to hire more staff. I I don't get that, I don't know what that means, but I know that I alone. Do about seventy thousand dollars a year of wheelchair Medicaid trips for Mahoning County. Now, there's other providers for that also. So if you're looking at that, and we had a big discrepancy here a few weeks ago regarding a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. For going to senior centers and that kind of stuff. There's extra dollars here that we're just throwing away because we haven't gotten well to it. And I have no idea why, but why the heck should Trumbull County. Senior Levy and obviously the residents pay for something that the Ohio Department of Medicaid will pay for, no problem.
I I I I understand your, you know, your question, but I'm gonna reflect. My opinion is, you don't really have to answer that if you want to deflect that to the Director Garnano gets back.
I'm kind of familiar with it. I mean, I I think I can answer as best as I know.
Shelley, get your name.
Uh Shelley Glosser, Job and Family Services. So if I understand your issue, you're saying that our non-emergency transportation is being put out for bid. And we're asking for ambulatory services, not wheelchair accessible, because Medicaid will pay for that.
No.
Okay, well, that's what I.
Medicaid will pay for the wheelchair trans.
Yes, yes.
But Trumbull County isn't doing anything to get those trips, so what they're doing is saying, if you have an ambulatory trip. Paulus will get you a provider to take you where you need to go. If you have a wheelchair trip, the answer I got is that they'll refer you to someone. Well, what's happening is they're going to Senior Levy. And when we go to Senior Levy, we're using our Trumbull County citizens' senior levy funds. To take those trips when you could, you could be billing the Department of Medicaid at the State of Ohio.
So I guess I'm not understanding then, so J F S has their pool of money, and we're taking the the bids for it, and then we pay for. The contract with the ambulatory services. If you're saying that these individuals want wheelchair access, they go through their Medicaid, so I guess I'm not understanding.
They're not going through Medicaid.
But they do, their H M O allows.
Sure, certain amount of it will be covered under those things. What I'm saying to you is, there are Medicaid individuals. Who aren't eligible through H M Os and so on, they go through the county. For example, and I'm just gonna use Mahoning County as an example. Every year, I give them a bid for doing transportation. We do both for Mahoning County wheelchair and ambulatory. They assign us, our consumers, we provide both ambulatory and wheelchair trips to them. At the end of each month, my staff bills directly to Mahoning County Department of Jobs and Family Services. For any of those Medicaid trips that were involved. If if there are people, again, there are some people that maybe we call dual level, Medicaid and Medicare. Those people will have a managed care group, and they can get a certain amount of transportation. We're not talking about them, we're talking about the other people. People that, under the Trumbull County Senior Levy. Are getting medical trips. That should be, and they're Medicaid eligible, but Trumbull County's not offering it to them.
How do you know that they're Medicaid eligible? Are they receiving Medicaid at this point?
This might sound like Trumbull County Transit, on the transit application we ask, are you Medicaid up? And the answer is just in a wheelchair.
Do you ask for verification that they're receiving that Medicaid benefit?
I do not ask for it, see, but they are.
Because at that point, it's my understanding that all H M Os are under the Medicaid at this point, yes, Carrot Source, Buckeye.
Not all. I I I am the largest carrot source provider in this area of transportation. Not all, because I'm still providing others in Mahoning County, and I'm still providing people in Trumbull County.
I I guess I would actually need a little bit of information.
I employ anyone to go talk to Mahoning County, see what they're doing. Mike's been doing this for his whole lifetime, he knows that Medicaid buys. Wheelchair trips.
Yes.
We're costing county money for no reason.
Can I, it's like sound like Trumbull County Transit Administrator. Uh Diane and I, uh we've had at least two meetings with previous boards and John from G I. At these meetings, it was always told us, uh his reasoning was, I give him an eight hundred number to call. Well, then they end up bouncing back to us. Oh, if you could go to the senior part, go to the disabled part, because I have a couple, but I'm disabled. Uh if they bounce back to us. To give you an idea of what it's costing us, and this is coming from Diane. She said back in twenty eighteen, when she was really keeping track of this, it was well over a hundred thousand dollars. They probably could have gone, there could have been Medicaid instead of us. To give you another idea, one client. That is a dialysis in a wheelchair would cost probably about thirteen thousand dollars a year. That's just one. That they should be dialysis, not, I mean, not dialysis, I'm sorry, they should be Medicaid, not through us.
But do you, do you understand we don't bill Medicaid?
You do not transport wheelchair clients through Medicaid from area.
Correct, because we, because because that provider is supposed to, my understanding, reach out to Medicaid and be reimbursed through them.
No, we can't do that. As providers, we don't.
But we don't, we don't.
You're getting, you're getting Medicaid, the ambulatory, it's the same thing. You're billing Medicaid for your ambulatory.
There's different, well, no, asking for an R F P for certain services.
Well, then you ask for the R F P to include the the wheelchair too, I mean, again, all the other counties are doing it. I don't know any other county that's not billing for wheelchairs, and I understand you're. You're not involved in this to that degree, you might be wrong, but the other counties are billing for wheelchair transport. It's only Trumbull, it's not.
Is there a way, well, we can think we can.
I mean, we've got our.
Look at Mahoning and look at some other uh counties and how they're doing it. How they're doing or how they're.
Look into it and see what.
I mean, I know it's probably John's, it's on John's.
He's obviously gonna know more about this than I, but I mean, I'm not sure.
I think, I think Mike's your expert right now, as your transit administrator and someone who's worked in this for thirty years, so.
Well, I've been doing this for a while, yeah.
Shelley, this has been an ongoing debate.
Correct.
For Alex. No, I I I swear it's that. Just because I was John's assistant at the time, this has been an ongoing debate, there's been multiple meetings between both festive parties. Um and there are underlying reasons, I can't speak to those, nor am I going to speak to those, but I would highly encourage. If this isn't the time or place, maybe the correct property, having both people at the meetings, the correct parties invested. Again, because there are financial reasons, there are, there are state audit reasons that I believe most of you can speak to better. There are a lot of reasons, I'm not saying it's our choice, it has something to do with me, but what I am saying is, please at least have the informed meeting. The bastard parties all at the table instead of approaching it right here, right now, and Mike, you know this, you've been through this for years. So I'm very well versed in this subject, I'd stop mine to speak to, but at least have that meeting with the proper party.
And I, Spike Salma, I'm kind of like with a hundred percent, I think we have to have a meeting with. John, and possibly Melissa, at some point, to find out again why. They're not being messed up, and again, I don't know why, I've worked in multiple counties besides here. Besides the ones we've talked about. Anytime Department of Job and Family Services would bid something out, wheelchairs are part of it. And they are paid through Medicaid.
And they haven't been historically in Trumbull County, but the reason why, you need to default to the proper people, okay?
The reason why.
That's all we're trying to say, so I I just don't want to give half, I'm not saying anybody's giving half of the story, but I do feel like we need to be fair and have the best of priorities.
The only, the only thing again.
Ten minutes ago.
With all due respect, the last time we had that meeting, Mike can remember, the last time we had that meeting. We were supposed to have a follow-up meeting, that J F S was gonna plan, and we never got a phone call, and that's been a couple of years.
Well, when Director Garnano gets back, second meeting is over there.
Yeah, I appreciate that stuff, I'll save it. Yeah, let it bring it to our attention.
Okay. Um, the fifty-three ten, Oda review was this Friday.
Right.
On the bottom, because you received an email.
We did.
Uh so my question is, will one of you be able to attend this meeting on Friday?
We're gonna, we'll get that.
Yeah, where's that meeting?
The meeting's gonna, I've decided the meeting will be held here. At what time? The meeting itself starts at eight o'clock, goes to two, but your email said to be here about ten o'clock. Friday, on Friday, and um I've already talked to the people to help out Oda.
I keep tracking, I'll be at the Chamber of Commerce, good morning, Portland.
Oh, Mike, where's the training at here? Where is this eight to two, where are you having a meeting?
Yes, Oda, okay, it's gonna be here in this room.
Okay, I already have the conference room booked now for this round, I don't know how, so, and it's it's mandatory drug training, and it's been booked through.
Well, no, I I talked to um.
And I have the conference.
I talked to um.
Dawn?
No, Courtney. And Courtney said she has some, she's having it someplace else.
Okay, I mean, I, alls I can tell you is what's on my phone, if something changes, I'll look, but.
And I I booked this room a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Do we have a divider?
We do have a divider, that's what I said, Courtney, we could divide the room.
If we know in advance.
Okay, I'll follow up with Courtney, um. It.
Dividing the room, there's.
We can't do that, yeah, it requires them.
Okay, this, this.
Our information can't, can't be done.
We'll figure it out.
I'll figure it out, I just, I know we've asked for it through the proper, I'm not saying anybody didn't, I'm just.
Yeah.
How many people will be at your meeting? One, two. Three, four, five, five or six.
Okay, for example, we have forty-five this morning, I mean, we have to train the whole county, it's it's not a, like, I mean, down to each employee, if supervisor she did.
Especially if you want to use more, like, if you can let you any good news.
Commissioners, the other thing too is, our, the prosecutor's office conference room is a little bit.
Usually pretty good.
Yeah, oh yeah, built dance of prosecutor's office. Uh our conference room's in a little bit of disarray right now because we're in the renovation process, but. We, it is usable, we do have our conference table down there that has eight or ten seats at it, so. That's an option also, I I don't believe we have anything scheduled in our conference room on Friday. So that's, if, you know, if you need.
And if she's made other, make other arrangements, the calendar update just doesn't show that, but maybe she has, I'll get.
We we checked, but I talked to this morning, I thought you said. Miami North Office or someplace else, or she does.
Okay.
But we double.
Oh yeah, the email, there is the email, just a drug training planning machine, did see that.
Well, there's one, so these are ongoing for the next two months, which there, so it's it's.
That was this morning.
Well, they're they're all day, yeah, we continue to have, we have to, again, it, we have fifteen hundred employees in this county, and we have.
Oh, you're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, this is way larger than, I hate to say that, but I, we, H R is tasked to coordinate that with everybody in this county, not just. In this building, so we've been working very hard to make sure that we offer that training, the training again is something that has to be done, it's not Alex's. There's some misconception about that too, it is not Alex's training, it is a statewide training. Uh actually, fifty states and the entire nation partake in this drug-free workplace, which is now switching to uh substance use preventative. Um so, long story short, if you are on the B C policy, or if you ever have an issue where you're going to meet a drug test somebody. This training is mandatory, all the way down to employee level, not just supervisors, not just. Something we take very seriously, we got it, my, my January first, so we started early enough. Uh because believe it or not, it will take me that long to get everybody in this country, so.
Okay, Lisa?
Real quick, um could we please inform the schedule with regards to the meetings the first week of September? Just so the department has to have some notice.
Oh, that's Labor Day?
Labor Day is September first.
How's that falling, is that Monday, what is that?
It's Monday.
Mm-hmm. So we would have to do the Wednesday workshop, Thursday meeting, right?
Okay, um well, remember, I will not be available after August twenty-seventh until September third.
Okay, wait a second, what's what's the third, Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
A Wednesday? That's the workshop.
Correct.
Um. Well.
It will be difficult for you to put an agenda together for. How that family.
I know. Um. What do you want to do, Thursday, Friday?
I won't be here on that Friday.
But can we think about it for a day and then we'll get back to you? Right, so. Well, listen, we need to figure out, you know, the first week of September.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm sure we could work it out, and if, and if, if. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure we could work it out, and if, and if, if.
Yeah.
Worst come the worst, you don't have one, but we've already had a hundred meetings.
Yes, we're far ahead of.
Let's just think about it.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll table and think about that, Lisa. We'll, we'll figure it out, that's.
Also, since it presented itself today, I just wanna remind everybody that's here and anybody that's listening, if you bring something for the commissioners, you need to bring me a copy. The meeting folder. It's an office copy, it's not a personal copy for me, it's for meeting folder. I need to have whatever you present. I'm smarter than you.
Good.
Um, did you?
I did, I did.
I got another thing, Mike. Are you still on what? Okay.
Building opens up at seven forty-five.
Here?
What time is it coming up?
I, that's a damn lot of doors, I mean, yeah, usually around there.
And if that a problem, somebody that's not available to come in here?
Oh, it, yeah, yes, it will be a problem, so that's why.
Odd way to be.
Well, that's why we need to go through the, yeah, well, we need to talk about that online.
Okay.
And we're working through a process, but yeah, those are things that we need to, if we can't get ahead of beforehand, that's what we're having to do as HR, so. Obviously, you know, we, all the revolving ships that we have in this county, we're not just training, uh, you know, our eighth thirty, fourth thirties, we're also training COs, we're training maintenance repair workers. So we have to work through that upfront to make sure that we have a proper access and everybody's well aware. There wouldn't be a sheriff here who's letting these people enter and exit, that's why, I mean, that's, I don't wanna say our expertise, I don't really wanna say our expertise, but. By default, it has to become our expertise, so.
He's here, but he doesn't let his person, nobody.
So you will have to definitely. Okay?
All right, thank you.
No problem. This is for Friday?
Friday, this Friday.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, she's gonna be, they're gonna be around eight o'clock.
Well, I, I don't know that that's.
Oh, um, okay.
It's not a big deal, we got a huge building here, we could find room for six people, it's not, not a big deal.
No, no, it's not that, it's the access into.
I know, eight o'clock though, but you can meet him with the front door, it's not.
Oh, that's not.
Sure, you got something?
Yeah, uh, Gary Newbrow, Santeri Engineering Commissioners, I tallied up our project list. And our upcoming work, it'll be done right in construction now, and that's what I think, and you're like, Lisa, I think you.
That's very.
A few weeks ago, I, I let you know that I have projects that are outstanding, but I really can't get to them. I, I was requested to, I'll show you which ones they are, but you have three spreadsheets here. First spreadsheet. Our completed projects and consent decree areas. If you look at that project cost total, it's about ninety million we have, either completed or under contract. In the consent decree areas, and the two that are under construction are shown in yellow, meth, Pendleton Gilmer. Uh, combined, that's about thirty-two million dollars just for those two projects. Good, or the second sheet. These are completed projects or under construction in areas that are not in a consent decree. So you can see there that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight open projects going on at once. Uh, Yankee Lake and Elm Road and Skogdor, uh, both of them, we still have the other five. They're still active, so, and we just to let you know, there's another fifty-one million dollars that we've completed or under contract. And the office has three areas. Bringing us to a total of a hundred forty-one million dollars of water sewer infrastructure since two thousand and seven. Of that, uh, we've brought in seventy-three, eight, seven, six million in grants to cover that, so we got grant covered to about fifty-two percent. Uh, on that hundred forty-one million, remains dead is being covered through capital charges, assessments, uh, that sort of thing. Go to the third sheet. Uh, these are the projects that we still need to complete, uh, that first block at the top, these are the consent decree areas. Uh, first one up there, under consent decrees is, are the Scott Street connections out there. Of nine hundred thousand, uh, still trying to get those installed. Then our next two are phases three and four of the Meadow Brook area, one's called Caleb Road, the other one's called Rio Vista. So those two are, we still have to get to, and. Uh, hopefully, I'm gonna get to a four million dollar principal, we're giving us awards for both of those in the two upcoming rounds. Then we have the large project down at Hubbard Township, Maplewood, uh, project, right now, just, uh. Preliminary, I've divided this, that into five different phases. The total cost of the project's gonna be around forty-five million. Till, uh, we can get further along in Meadow Brook, I really can't focus on Maplewood. Uh, I am gonna put in for some, uh. Next time the congressman or the senators ask for your marks, we do have that preliminary plan that we have written up. Or we have something to submit, and I'm trying to get some congressional earmarks for that big, uh, project in Hubbard Township, that consent decree. Uh, going down. Uh, projects that are not in a consent decree area, we have train drive. And I'll be submitting the O P W C grant application for that here in the next couple of weeks, that'll be on the agenda, I think, next week. Gary Shaffer's still here? He's supposed to send over the O P W C resolution, and hopefully it's gonna be on next week's. Uh, so that's really the only one I have programmed with the funding there as far as super projects go. These remaining ones, these are the outstanding ones that I, I mentioned to you that I really can't get moving on yet. Um, and you can see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, similar project. That is difficult for the department to, or, on those. Also, the water projects are in a block just below that, and you can see we have, uh. Blueprint phase two, we have to move on that, or I'm gonna lose the fifty percent forgiveness. Still wagon, uh, we were waiting for what happened, uh, on that Anderson Morris public, there, that. So blueprint two, still wagon, uh, the Champion Zeta Water Booster Pump, we're already getting that engineered, so. The top three in the water are something that we are progressing with, but these next three on the, uh, water end of thing, Williams Drive, Earl Wilson. Uh, I haven't really had time to address any of those. And, but anyway, just so you know, the Williams Drive, we are gonna have to get that engineer from by now, so. Uh, when I find time, we're gonna try to get the RFQ off of that, that's something I've heard, he used to always do. For the design engineering. Just to give you an update on where we're at with water super projects, I mean. Water project, astounding amount of work here, and we have an astounding amount. That's basically it.
Well, it does raise how many? Eighteen hundred?
Yes, I know, well aware of that.
Two hundred million dollars done on another ninety-four million.
We're almost there.
Amazing.
Almost there.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it is amazing. Um, thank you, Gary.
Yes.
One other thing while we're here, um, Bill. We had mentioned, and I guess, cause I keep getting, uh, this document signed for, for three M. Can we put that on the agenda to vote on that second?
That's a question I wanted to talk to, to Phil Dance of Prosecutor's Office, I wanted to talk to Gary Newbrow about, and maybe Matt, uh. As you know, you did approve to sign off on the phase one of this, but apparently there's already a phase two settlement perhaps for this. Uh, PFOS preempt settlement. Uh, another document signed came through, and I, I wasn't aware there was another one coming through, if it is a separate thing, then we would have to put it on the agenda, yeah.
How, how did the last resolution read?
That's what I was, I don't know, Lisa.
That we were going to.
So allow, sign, allow documents. It could be.
If it is, then yeah, I have no issue with it. I just don't wanna be signing something, you know?
The initial, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it, and maybe we could just, but again, it wouldn't hurt if we need to. I just, I gotta, I wanna learn a little bit more about what the second is already. Is this a second settlement? Is this just a second payment on the first settlement? I'm not sure. So I'll find out, I'll, I'll talk to Matt a little bit, he's been in direct contact to the law firm on this.
And maybe we should have made that resolution, assign any, right, future.
And maybe we could do that if we need to do that.
Okay, if the next one, yeah, let's make it so we don't have to go to.
But I just wanna learn a little bit more about what that's, what this new one is.
Okay. Well.
I got one more. I'm so excited, I know, sorry. Um, I just wanna bring you up to speed on what's going on in nine one one in regards to the chair lift, as well as the stair lift, um. So last week, um, I was able to get a quote for the wheelchair lift upwards to twenty-five, uh, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. Um, it's a little bit too much, we're able to reach back out to a company and see if they were able to take. What we got over at Chestnut and take it in nine one one to retrofit it for a stair lift. Um, upwards to thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, with the additional cost of maybe fifteen to two thousand dollars. For electrical, that has to say at the bottom of the steps, um, as Alex touched on, we're trying to find ways to accommodate nine one one. Um, because the wheelchair lift is down, um, and that's where we stand with that, so if I get a bolt. Or any additional work that might need done out there, I will run it past you guys, but, um. We're found, found a way to accommodate nine one one, since the wheelchair lift is down.
Do we have to do that? Not a lot, even though we don't have any employees using it?
So Commissioners, I don't wanna get into all of that, um, at the moment, there's been multiple communications, but technically. The building is still free ADA requirements, I don't wanna, don't quote me, it was like nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two, I can't remember. However, they did put the elevator after, so with that being the case. Right now, we don't have an employee who needs it, however, again, I had a labor management meeting last week, I sent an email to you guys, I would like to talk session. Um, on other issues, um, with that being said, if an employee needs an ADA accommodation. Yes, I have to find a way to give them an ADA accommodation, it's that simple, I have to find.
I would say at that time, we explore that, then like, why dump money in the building that we're not gonna be in for very much longer? That just doesn't make sense, if we don't need it, if we have an employee that comes up, we can put that employee on paid leave or something while we do this.
We can't.
Would be a lot cheaper than.
We can talk.
Doing this for a week.
We need to talk about these things.
I do have a question, Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office, they treat those, those lifts as elevators, and they do have to be inspected.
That includes, yes, right.
Oh, okay, 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 we've already got the handle.
There's reasons that I choose to talk about that offline when we're going to inspectable diagnosis, so whatever may come up on that topic, that's why I sent you a board of you last night, saying. That is the topic for the second session.
Okay, so where are we going then? We, we have an elevator. Oh, wait a second, what I do wanna know, no, no, I, we, we have a, we have an elevator lift in Chestnut Building?
It's a wheelchair.
Or wheelchair.
Not a wheelchair.
Or not an elevator.
So let me just be clear, at nine one one currently, we have a makeshift, okay?
Right.
What I, that's here or there, I'm not even gonna go there. What we want to have is, obviously now with that now being possible, what your maintenance department is telling you is that we have a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar bill to. That.
Right.
Elevator will not work, it would have to be.
The down, yeah.
Um, where one thing to remember is when you begin to start to touch those entities or open anything up. It then may become that you have to make the whole place accessible, so be very, very cautious with how you choose to go forward. We will talk about this more in the afternoon tomorrow, um, but in the meantime, you don't have anywhere else to put those employees, okay? It's not like nine one one, you can just pick them up and put them in another clerical office, it doesn't work like that, Commissioners. So what I'm saying is, is we're down to minimum staffing levels as is. If somebody were to break a knee and ankle, whatever, you know, have an accident, I need to be able to have a place to. It's, that's the best way I can tell her. If that's a risk you wanna take, we'll talk about it further in a time.
I got you. Well, Commissioners, with that.
Your departments, these real quick.
Well, you got four things.
First, that, um, you know, some business incubator, right? Has a ribbon tying today, they're requesting the commissioner be there to talk, so we got some of the chamber going for saying.
I know, I was unavailable.
Ribbon cutting, a ribbon tying.
And I think you'll see.
Well, we didn't, we need to call Nico back and see, he's got him on the agenda in his speech, knows for somebody.
Commissioner, I did. They requested that I come to speak.
Yeah.
And I did, Lisa, or who got, did I get the email from Dawn? And I did respond, I appreciate the invitation, however, I'm not available. Um, at that time today to do that, so, uh, I didn't get any response back since. So I don't know whether. Um, were you reaching your hand? So I don't know whether, Danny, you were available? You're not available.
They asked me.
Commissioner?
Well, it's, you know, what, you know, what.
Yeah, I.
We'll talk about it.
Okay, that's one.
Cause that's today. Um. Thomas Steel is having an issue. They make components for batteries, uh, over there, they've got a hundred and seventy employees, and their biggest business is making batteries, for. Known battery companies, um, the battery grade steel, there's nobody in the United States makes battery grade steel. So they get all their steel from China to make batteries. There's a fifty percent tariff on Chinese steel, including the batteries. So their, their management reached out to me. And with the unions, and said they would like a letter from the commissioners that they're gonna submit to the senators and the president. To exempt battery grade steel, since there's no manufacturer in the United States that makes it or can make it. Um, to allow that to not be fifty percent tariff for to ship to the United States for Thomas Steel. And taught to other parent company or whatever to be able to function. They don't get this, they said they could go under, lose all hundred and seventy jobs, is that is their business, and they can't afford fifty percent tariff added on to the product that they're making. So, um, they generated a letter up that they want us to sign, or at least a, a commissioner to sign. I forwarded the copies to both of your cell phones, um, if you can read that over, and if we can prove tomorrow. Signing on to this letter with the unions and with Thomas Steel to send that in to the White House. Um, I guess there's other manufacturers across the United States that are in the same boat where they have a product that. For them to continue as an American company making product here, they have to buy some components from overseas that are unavailable within our borders. Um, so when you read the letter, if you can do that, we can maybe talk about tomorrow, the discussion time, and then decide if we can approve. Signing on this letter officially as.
I'm, I'm in approval for any letter that keeps jobs and factory.
Well, I'd still like for you to read it first, to make sure we, right, to the, the text of it, cause I didn't, I didn't write it all, you know, it was written. By the people of Thomas Steel and, and with help from some advisors to make sure it's, you know, what they needed.
Okay.
But before we sign off, I wanna make sure that happens. Um. Okay, next, of course, there is the chamber thing on Friday, I don't know if anybody watched what happened in Cortland last night. But it was, it was worse than our meetings we used to have, uh, and a lot of it, Mr. Danzo. Made me think of you when you warned us so many times about bids and contracts and extending bids and going over what we expected. Um, there's a lesson to be learned, and I'd, I'd look, ask anybody. If you're in government, watch that meeting yesterday and watch the way it was presented by a guy, Mr. Bayes, it was eye-opening for us as government to see. To make sure we do things right, cause there's, they may have some major problems for after the stuff he brought out yesterday. And then, uh, finally, CCAO has their, uh, summer symposium. The topic is gonna be property taxes and, uh, a couple other pertinent topics, the things we talk about now. Um, that's Sunday to Tuesday. Mahoning, Columbia, Portage, Giaga. And Lake, all our representatives are going, Ashville is sending all three of their commissioners, we're the only county where nobody's RSVP'd or confirmed yet in northeast Ohio. Um, wanted to see if someone wanted to go to that, Mr. DeFavio. Said somebody can ride down with him, uh, in Mahoning County, he called me yesterday. Um, I would go if no one else wants to go or can go, but it's Sunday to Tuesday, I think we should have a representative. Just because all this stuff that's going on now with the, this. Uh, especially the property tax stuff right now, CCAO's taking a stance and. Uh, there's a lot to be learned there on how to rebound from that if that should happen.
I, uh, personally, I, you, you just brought it to our attention yesterday, I had no.
This may, it was, they did, the last day of the last meeting we had.
Yeah.
They went over, our next meeting is here, here's where we make reservations, all the stuff, I believe you had another commitment you guys leave a little early that day. But it's been on the schedule with CCAO and in their newsletter every month, and we did. And we did discuss that the last meeting that our next meeting would be this one here. It's three hundred forty dollars.
I'm sure we'll get a. Get a report on what was discussed. I mean, CCAO, they keep us informed anyway. I mean, we know that they're against it, so.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll make a discussion.
Thank you for bringing it to. Yeah. All we need to know for planning and stuff. We're gonna send somebody. We gotta get the registration BN. And, you know, then make your RSVP down there and find logic.
You saying you wanna go?
I would go if you guys didn't wanna go, but if they wanted to go, then we could discuss. But I think we should.
Oh, I don't have an issue whatsoever with that. I thought you meant that you weren't available.
No, I'm I'm saying one of us should go for those, I think, and if you can, I I would go. And then.
So we need that on the agenda then?
Oh, I think so. No, cuz we do at the very beginning, our first meeting, I think we approved. Trainings, things like that, but for all the portions at that time, so I don't think we need. They hate me at a time, at times, right there.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Anybody else? All good?
You said, I was just waiting to say that I would like your permission to add an executive session to agenda tomorrow. That's what I.
Oh, yeah, we figured. We had already, you know.
I just wanna make sure you're. That's all.
We need a motion.
The chairman of motion. Your second.
Sir Bernard.
Yes.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.